It is now seven PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Fosdick. Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here. We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have twelve board salutes tonight. We have a lot of stuff to be happy about. So I will start with Mr. Carubus.
U.S. News ranks District two oh four high schools in the top fifty in the state. U.S. News and World Report released its two thousand and twenty-four Best High School ranking. All three of District two oh four high schools made the national list and were ranked in the top fifty in the state. U.S. News ranked Niqua Valley three hundred and ninety-six in the nation and fifteenth in the state. Matia Valley was seven hundred and two in the nation and twenty-eighth in the state. And Wabonzi Valley ranked eight hundred and seventy-fourth in the nation and thirty-seventh in the state. Rankings are based on state assessments, graduation rates, and how well schools prepare students for college. Congratulations to all three of our high schools on this outstanding achievement. Would you like me to keep going on the two other times? Two thousand and twenty-four Best Communities for Music Education. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation named District two oh four as one of the best communities for music education. District two oh four is one of nine hundred and seventy-five districts in the nation to receive this recognition. The award acknowledges schools and districts across the country for their commitment and support for music education. The selection process is facilitated by the Music Education Research Institute at the University of Kansas and is based on music class participation, instruction, facilities, and overall support for music education programming. This is the thirteenth year that Indian Prairie has received this national recognition. Congratulations to all of our music teachers who provide outstanding music opportunities for our students.
Ms. Demming.
I have one more.
Oh, you have one more? Oh, shoot.
We have a lot. Accessible Community Task Force Student Recognition Award. The board salutes step student Marquesha Carwell, a Wabonzi Valley High School alum, who has been honored with the Accessible Community Task Force Student Recognition Award. She received the award and her out she received the award for her mentorship and support to our step students and her outstanding contributions at a local daycare center. Her dedication to enhancing the lives of those with disabilities exemplifies the very best of our community. Congratulations, Marquesha. Is she here today in the audience? No. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Demming.
Rotary Youth Scholarships. The board salutes several District two oh four students for receiving youth scholarship awards from the Rotary Club of Naperville. This year's recipients include Matia Valley seniors Akshay Bayad, Bryce Jordan, Niqua Valley senior Grace Stubbets, and Wabonzi Valley seniors Ainsley Atwater and Zach Henigan. These scholarships funded through generous donations from the Rotary Club of Naperville. Naperville Sunrise Rotary and Naperville Rotary Charities, Naperville Rotary Foundation, and members of the Slowcome family range from two thousand to five thousand dollars. Congratulations to all the scholarship recipients. Thirty-first Annual High School Video Festival. The board salutes Matia Valley, Niqua Valley, and Wabonzi Valley media production students for their achievements at the Midwest Media Education Association's Thirty-First Annual High School Video Festival. These students demonstrated remarkable talent, with Niqua Valley earning multiple top honors and a national award nomination. Wabonzi Valley achieved top placements in live event sports coverage. And additionally, Matia Valley had two videos that placed as finalists, including one for the main and a commercial by Maclin Victor, who also won the Lucas Palamore Scholarship. Congratulations on a job well done. American Legion Oratorical Contest winner. The board salutes Niqua Valley senior April Zhang for taking first place at the two thousand and twenty-four American Legion Department of Illinois Constitution Oratorical Contest in Springfield, Illinois. The oratorical contest has developed knowledge and a greater appreciation of the Constitution of the United States among high school students. April won a two thousand dollar scholarship and will represent the state of Illinois at the National Finals in Hillsdale, Michigan later this month. Congratulations, April. Congratulations to all of our winners. Anybody that was mentioned in the audience this evening? Congratulations to all.
Okay, I will have to read one myself. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation released the names of the first group of winners in the sixty-ninth Annual National Merit Scholarships Program. Approximately seven hundred and seventy distinguished high school seniors have won corporate-sponsored National Merit Scholarship Awards financed by about ninety-four corporations, companies, foundations, and other business organizations. Our District two oh four high school senior was named in this year's competition. Hamash Nasaka from Niqua Valley High School. Congratulations to Hamash. All right, Ms. Gents.
Two thousand and twenty-four Student Council School of Excellence Award. The board salutes Young Elementary for recently receiving the two thousand and twenty-four American Student Council Association Student Council School of Excellence Award. The school was selected based on their submission of projects completed during the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year in the areas of community service, student leadership, citizenship, and school spirit. Councils were also required to submit letters of recommendation from their school principal and student council president. Congratulations. Two thousand and twenty-four Illinois Horizon School to Watch recipient. The board salutes Crown Middle School on their third redesignation as an Illinois Horizon School to Watch. Schools to watch are focused on continuous school improvement. Schools participate in the Association of Illinois Middle Grade Schools networking events, present at association workshops and conferences, and provide leadership as part of the Ames Network. Schools are recognized at the National Forum Annual Schools to Watch Conference in Washington, DC. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement. IPCA Scholarship winners. The board salutes the three District two oh four students who were honored by the Indian Prairie Classified Association with scholarships. The Indian Prairie Classified Association awarded scholarships to Audrey Smith from Niqua Valley and Claire Hagerman and Kendall Matthew from Wabonzi Valley. We appreciate the Indian Prairie Classified Association's support of our students through their scholarship program. Congratulations to all the scholarship recipients.
Ms. Jane.
Yes, I have two. So, the first one, Bilingual Parent and Community Resource Fair. The board salutes Angie Nieto and Maria Arias Garzon, our bilingual parent and community relations coordinators, as well as Shelley Sakar Damaglia, our instructional services secretary, for their efforts in organizing the Bilingual Parent and Community Resource Fair on Wednesday, April seventeenth. Their commitment and hard work made the event an enormous success, attracting over two hundred students, parents, community partners, and volunteers. Congratulations on a job well done. And last but certainly least, um...
So, I... Uh, IP...
Yes.
When the name is called, they can come up here.
Yes, that is in my insurance.
Okay, sorry.
IPSD Grow Your Own Teacher Program. The board salutes the District two oh four seniors in the Grow Your Own Teacher Program who have dedicated themselves to becoming the next generation of educators. The Indian Prairie School District's Grow Your Own Teacher Program includes a group of over one hundred high school students. They engage in practical, real-world experiences that prepare them for careers in education. This program is open to any District two oh four high school student interested in pursuing a career related to education. The goal is to foster a passion for education and encourage these students to return to become teachers at IPSD two oh four. When we call your name, please come up to the front and be recognized, and please remain for a group photo. Brianna Alvarado. Sarah Atten. Yasavi Bhimaavadapu. Ciara Bolster. Chloe Burr. Jack Clark. Aleona Cole. Nikki Demovsky. Courtney Gaither. Tristan Gildemeister. Aiden Gonzalez. Amari Hawkins. Thomas Kline. Jada Lewis. Cree Lewis. Kylie Maxim. Allison Mayer. Emily Mertes. Alyssa Mitchellak. Ace Lynn Mitchell. Haley Mitchell. Leba Nadim. Kara Nagel. Shiri Nayakanti. Allison Naval. Kayla Newberg. Kate Otto. Leanna Payton. Liliana Perez. Asa Potts. Naomi Solansky. Grace Saranowski. Allison Schurenberg. Kelsey Shaw. Giselle Sims. Sarah Taylor. Alyssa Umana. Michael Villabos. And Kate Woolfle. Woolfeld, sorry. Congratulations. We'll now be taking a picture.
Oh, yes, they're coming.
There are tall ones.
They are tall as in you. Oh, yeah, they may not...
That's okay.
It shouldn't be. Dr. Tally would be enough.
Want your free smile?
Keep smiling.
I just want to say, these are the future teachers of tomorrow. We are excited about the Grow Your Own program. It has grown in Indian Prairie. And so we are excited about these students who will be going off to college and their desire to be educators and affect change for the future. And for that, we should be very proud and very pleased that they are going to do that. So thanks to all of you and to your parents for the work that you have done to support your children now and in the future.
Sadapa, I'd like a last round of applause for all of the fantastic accomplishments that were run out tonight for our district. Thank you. It is now time for public comment and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited... Oh, sorry, sorry. I said out of order here. Oh, sorry, okay, yeah, sorry. We're gonna do our student representative report. So, Rishvatham Sarraj is here from Matia Valley High School. Sorry.
Hold on until they...
I was ready to go into public comment.
Hello, there we go. Thank you.
All right, you can go ahead, Rishvath.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rishvatham Sarraj and I'm the executive board representative for Matia Valley High School. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you all today. Before we begin, I'd like to make a quick announcement. This will be my final board report for Matia Valley High School, and I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure working with you guys. Soha Panchal here will be succeeding me in my position, and I have no doubt that she'll do an amazing job. I'll begin the report and she'll finish it off. First, let's begin with some general updates. We just successfully held our prom at the Matrix Club with six hundred and seventy-five students in attendance. We also are excited to celebrate our senior awards on Wednesday, May eighth, with the senior road trip planned for May eleventh at Six Flags. Additionally, we are looking forward to celebrating our staff from May tenth to, sorry, from May sixth to May tenth for Staff Appreciation Week. And some awards to highlight in BPA is we received third place in Network Design Team, second place in Health and Leadership Topics, and we had a state championship in Entrepreneurship. In DECA, we had many top ten finishers highlighted by third place in Business Finance, second place in Integrated Marketing Campaign. And for Math Team, we placed eight in State, and we had a first place for an individual. For FCCLA, we had two gold and one silver in Fashion Display Educational Toy Design and Apparel Construction.
Hello, everyone. I'm Soha Panchal, and I'm so honored to be here. First, I would like to start off with Fine Arts. The cast and crew for Shrek the Musical put together an amazing and wonderful performance for all of Matia Valley. On February twenty-second, Matthew Shepard from EYSO visited and worked with all orchestra class periods in preparation for their M-I-O-S-M concert. On April fifteenth, Dr. Michael Mishra from SIU Edwardsville worked with Concert Orchestra and Chambers Strings on their spring concert material. TRIAM had its annual benefit recital on Wednesday, April seventeenth. Over one hundred eighty students from the music department were involved, and students were able to collaborate and share their talents with each other. Kalan Puttak, Virtuoso Tabla, and multi-ethnic percussionists worked with several music classes and will be performing with the Wind Ensemble on Thursday, May ninth. The Matia Valley art students and staff are working on painting a large bee for the Naperville Summer Public Sculpture Series. Busey Bank has once again sponsored the sculpture, and the Matia artists are working with the theme, "Community." The sculptures can be viewed in downtown Naperville this summer. Last but not least, Athletics. The Badminton Team are now sectional champions. G-Track finished second place at the DVC Conference. MV Spring Sports have many successful programs as we are approaching the finish line. Girls Soccer, Girls Water Polo, Girls Lacrosse, Softball, Boys and Girls Track, and B Tennis are a few of the programs that are having a very good spring season and hope to make some noise entering the IHSA State Series Play. Lastly, we had our largest college signing day class on April seventeenth with twenty student athlete signings. That's all for the May board report. Thank you all for your time, and as always, Go Go Mustangs.
Rishvatham, thank you for your reporting all year, and can you tell us what you're gonna be up to next year?
So I'm gonna be attending class day for day's activities.
Congratulations. Okay, now we will do public comment. It is now time for public comment and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have one speaker tonight, Alicia Smith. I think you can skip telling us that you live here, whatever, since we all know.
Hello, my name is Alicia Smith, and I want to start by congratulating Rachel Mahmood for being the Illinois Teacher of the Year. Rachel is a teacher at Georgetown, and I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that we have amazing teachers at Georgetown School. We also have amazing families at Georgetown School. But unfortunately, Georgetown School is designed in such a way by boundaries that the low-income percentage at Georgetown and at Longwood is sixty-one percent. Sixty-one percent of the student population is low-income, which is more than three times the district average and also greater than the state average. And this is not a category where you would want to be higher than the state average. This is inequitable. As a result, Georgetown and Longwood both have scores in ELA and Math that are far below the state average. As you know, I am a teacher. I taught in two oh four. I now teach in two oh three. And it should be an embarrassment to us as a district that we have schools that are below the state average at all, to be honest with you. And it's not just Georgetown and Longwood. It's also McCarty and Fisher. And the district and the administration decided to feed three title schools into Fisher, Georgetown, McCarty, and Gombert. It does not need to be this way. Naperville two oh three's low-income percentage is seventeen percent, to two oh four's nineteen percent. They do not have a single school that is more than three times their district average of low-income. Their lowest-income school is thirty-one percent, which is where I work, Scott School. As a result, every single one of their schools is above the state average in both ELA and Math. So a parent, a family who moves into two oh three, no matter what their income, no matter what their race, whatever apartment or house that they find, know that their child is going to go to a school where everyone is able to have a high educational achievement and opportunity. No demographic descriptor should indicate student outcomes, opportunities, or achievement. Everyone should have that opportunity. We are not granting that to all of our students in two oh four. So, I would say that we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the board and Indian Prairie community. I have to start my comments with sad news. Mr. Richard Dillander, a dedicated building substitute at Olin, passed away recently. Mr. Dillander had been a substitute since two thousand and eighteen. We express our condolences to his family. May they know he made an impact on our students and staff at Olin, and I ask that we take a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Tomorrow, Tuesday, is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. We take the day and week to honor our educators who work tirelessly, day in and day out, in support of our students. The role of a teacher has been an ever-changing one from the days of the one-school, one-room schoolhouse to now. Nonetheless, what we have stayed constant among all educators is a desire to help shape the future of our country and our world by supporting our children in their academic and social success. Being a teacher is a calling, one that few answer. The power of teaching may be found in this quote from an unknown source. Quote, "Teaching is the one profession that creates all other professions." I salute all of our educators tonight with their exemplary, excellent, and engaging skills in preparing our children for their futures. In light that this, the fact that this is National Teachers Week, I want to take a moment to remind all that last week, Dr. Rachel Mahmood, teacher at Georgetown Elementary, was announced as Illinois Teacher of the Year. This is the first time that our district has had a Teacher of the Year. Dr. Mahmood will now have the opportunity to compete in the National Teacher of the Year Program. We applaud her. She is all about ensuring her students are heard and that all students are included. We are very proud of her accomplishments and know that over the next school year, as she travels from the school district to school district, she will share her strengths with others and will learn what others are doing in their classrooms. Today, May sixth, is National Nurses Day. I want to take a moment tonight to thank our nurses in our schools. Our healthcare professionals in our schools deserve our praise, our gratitude, and admiration for the work that they have continued to do. I think this quote from Ross C. Williams describes our nurses, quote, "To do what nobody else will do in a way that nobody else can do, in spite of all we go through, that is what it is to be a nurse." I thank all of our nurses in our schools for going above and beyond and doing what they could never, what many could never do in taking care of our children and our staff. Matia Valley, Niqua Valley, and Wabonzi Valley have been recognized as Project Lead the Way two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four distinguished schools. This recognition means that our schools are empowering students to thrive in an evolving world and achieving exemplary results with, from our Project Lead the Way High School programs. Matia Valley, Niqua Valley, and Wabonzi Valley are three of the two hundred and ninety-one Project Lead the Way High School programs across... Project Lead the Way High School programs across the country to receive recognition, and our three high schools are three of the thirteen Illinois high schools recognized. I remind parents that this year we will have a two-week STEM camp, which is an expansion of our prior one-week camp. If you are interested in attending, please check out information on our website or check with the principal of your child's school. The camp is open to students K through eighth grade. I would now like to request that the Board of Ed approve the appointment of Mr. Michael Zeeman as the principal of Longwood Elementary School effective July one, twenty twenty-four. He will be replacing the current principal of the school. Mr. Zeeman is coming to us from Centennial Elementary School in Plano, where he's been principal since twenty seventeen. Mr. Zeeman, prior experiences include being an assistant principal and a teacher. He also has three children in our district and his whole family is over there. And additionally, I'd like to ask the board to approve Mr. Patrick Riley as an assistant principal for Gregory Middle School to fill a vacancy at the school starting July one. Mr. Riley is coming from Cayland Community Unit School District, where he's currently Director of Educational Services. He has served as a principal and a teacher of grades three, six, and seven. He has expressed a strong interest in working in District two oh four, and he is here with his family. And I'll now turn this back over to you, Ms. Donahue.
I need a motion to approve Michael Zeeman as principal of Longwood Elementary School as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Michael Zeeman as principal of Longwood Elementary School as presented. I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Demme.
Aye.
The motion passes. Congratulations.
I have with me tonight here my family and the reason why I've been able to achieve everything I've done. I've got my wife, Amy, and my children, Anna, Kate, and Callan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I need a motion now to approve Patrick Riley as Assistant Principal at Gregory Middle School as presented.
I move that the board approve Patrick Riley as Assistant Principal at Gregory Middle School as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Mr. Rising.
The motion passes. Congratulations.
Yes, I'm here with my family as well. My wife Jennifer is with us, and we have three girls, my oldest Ashlyn, our middle daughter Harper, and our youngest Sydney.
Well, welcome to everyone. Thank you and congratulations. Next, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for approval of Consent Agenda Item F through N.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items F through N as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five School Board Meeting Calendar as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five School Board Meeting Calendar as presented. Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. And Ms. Demme.
Aye.
The motion passes. I now need a motion to approve the middle school, high school textbook adoption as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the middle school, high school textbook adoption as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Did we receive any public comment or anything? Okay. All right, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Mr. Rising.
The motion passes. I now need a motion to approve the high school AP Psychology course as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the high school AP Psychology course as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Is there any comments on this? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gins.
Yes.
Mr. Rising. Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Demme.
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now have our presentation from Dr. Nader Najjar, Mr. Brian Giovanni, Ms. Tanya Monim, and Ms. Shelley Kelsey regarding artificial intelligence.
Good evening, Dr. Tally, Board of Education. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here to present to you some of our work around artificial intelligence and talking about how it connects to the strategic plan, our priorities one, two, three, and four, and also touches on some of the board policies six sixty and seven one ninety. My name is Nader Najjar. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Innovation, and I'll let everyone else introduce themselves.
My name is Shelley Kelsey. I'm an instructional technology teacher at Fisher Middle School.
My name is Steve Wick. Wow, that was a little loud. I am the science teacher and instructional technology coordinator at Nikla Valley High School.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Monim, and I'm an instructional specialist for Equity and Innovation.
And Brian Giovanni, Director of Innovation.
Wonderful, thank you. Our purpose today is to educate and engage stakeholders in the strategic integration of AR, AI in our district, and in the presentation today, we'll talk about, a little bit about what is AI, what does it mean to us, how is it different than just artificial intelligence versus maybe generative artificial intelligence? Also about how we formed our task force, the work and the outcomes of that task force, and then next steps. As we see there, one of the reasons I believe it was important that we formed this task force and did the work that we did, this intentional work, is because it touches on so many of the strategic priorities that we have as a district. It really does talk about student development, also how we invest in our staff, how we engage with the community in understanding what AI is and how they can support their students, and also our resources and how we optimize our resource and operations. So that's why we found it so important to be intentional about this work.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about why now. And why now is kind of one of those tough things to do with stuff like this. This is happening faster than anything I've seen in my thirty years of education. It's almost astounding what generative AI can do for us and some of the possibilities it'll open the door for in, in terms of really the pace of it. And I would say we're both ahead of the game, but also way behind because this is happening so fast. ChatGPT came out a little bit over a year ago where educators started to recognize that as a potential tool and also a potential challenge with students using that to start creating things that we didn't have the ability to even know. And there are tons of tools out there right now, from Bard to Bing to ChatGPT. I'll change their names a couple of times. It's now Copilot and Gemini, which is what Bard was, to get us through that. And we want to talk a little bit about today about what we're doing to start preparing and then to continue preparing as we work our way through this. And when we talk about generative AI, AI has been around for a while, generative is creating stuff for us. It's basically a partner, a collaborative partner, that will create something that you can prompt it to do. So when we talked about it initially with our AI task force, this was kind of where we started. And I've changed this one up a little bit in some of the presentations I've done. Not going to read all this to you, but we've talked a ton about benefits. This can help teachers and students create, think critically, collaborate. It's a tremendous tool for all those types of things. And when we talk about it at Nikla and a lot of the other schools, we don't talk about the risks anymore. That was the initial fears. Can we block it? Can we stop it? No. The kids are going to go and use it one way or the other. We need to also be able to use this as educators and then be able to educate our students in all of these different things. So when we talk about it, we always talk about possibilities. What we can do with this. How do we work through bias? A lot of stuff we already do in schools, this just becomes another tool in our toolbox to get us through some of these different things about misinformation. And a lot of the stuff that's in the Portrait of the Graduate that we work with, with kids, ties back into some of the stuff that we're going to start moving forward with this once we open it up to students in the building next school year.
So we realized after seeing this AI, the possibilities of AI, that we needed to act on it. And we needed to gather a group of educators and stakeholders in order to really look at how, how we can build our capacity. And we also realized that we need to develop some policies within, around AI because it, the opportunities are vast. And as Steve mentioned, also there are some potential risks in there. So we, as a district, we formed a task force in order to address, address those fears or those, those opportunities. And we wanted to, we also wanted to, we also wanted to open up AI for our students. As of right now, AI is blocked for our students. Certain, certain applications are open for our staff, but right now it is blocked for our students, and we are hoping in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to open up these tools. But before we open up these tools, we know we needed to build some capacity and create some policies. So we created some collaborative working groups. We gathered some K twelve classroom teachers and support staff along with high school, middle school, and elementary school principals and assistant principals, along with some representatives from the district office. And we really wanted to get a diverse background of our teaching staff based on level and also their expertise. And we wanted to build capacity through our collaboration. We also wanted to gather some feedback of how each levels are using it and what they're seeing and what they're hearing about AI. So we had essentially four working groups. We had one working group that was really focused on building a belief statement and some guiding principles. We really wanted to create that belief statement because we believe, we believe in embracing AI. And we felt, we really felt it was essential that we have that belief statement in order to guide our work. We then created other groups, one building professional learning for our staff, and then a second, a third group that was focused on student learning through AI. Our fourth group was also looking at what tools, with the vast number of AI tools, what are the tools that we find impactful and that teachers and students can use in their, in their learning?
So, Group One, just to, just to pause for a second and think about this task force, about how intentional we were. It would have been easy just to say, here's AI, jump in and get some early adopters, and we, and that's just how it stays. And people maybe stay behind for a little bit. But sometimes you go slow so you can go fast. And so the task force really wanted to be intentional about how we think about guiding our staff, guiding our students and our community through this new change. And so the first group talked about big picture, and we really started to think about what is our, what are our beliefs around AI? And we gathered the task force. We had all of them kind of brainstorm. We crunched up those ideas, and we came up with a belief statement that was representative of all the voices in the room. And this is the belief statement, so I'll read it to you. It says, "Our district recognizes the transformative power of AI in enriching the educational journey. We are committed to using AI ethically, responsibly, and in alignment with our portrait of a graduate, ensuring it enhances rather than replaces human connection and empowers both students and educators." So sometimes a belief statement is enough. Sometimes you need a little bit more. And so for some people, the belief statement is enough. They can take that and run with it. And that'll guide a lot of the professional learning and development that happens in the district. But then we thought, let's expound on it. So there was a lot of ideas that came out of there. So one of the documents that we created that should go live on our, on our website in the next few days was a document around the belief statement and guiding principles for generative AI in our district. And it talks about generative AI, why we formed the task force, what the blueprint for learning looks like. And then we dove into guiding principles, which really drives a lot of what we're doing. And one of the guiding principles there is empowerment, which is interesting because in our culturally responsive framework in-house that we have built last year, that you'll be maybe hearing more about later this summer, one of the pillars of that is empowering. Right? Culturally responsive instruction empowers students and empowers staff. And it's interesting that when we got together with the task force, one thing that we saw over and over again is that they said AI should empower our staff and our students. And that's what we talk about in the guiding beliefs, is that it empowers students. It empowers them to explore, create, and learn independently. And of course, to empower students, we have to ensure that we're empowering our staff also. And then real-world preparation. And so in these guiding beliefs, it really shows our alignment with creating the twenty-first century learner and also ensuring that we're aligned with our portrait of a graduate and our vision of what we want a student and a graduate to look like in our district.
And so one thing that we know, one thing that we know, before teachers can implement this in their classroom, they have to feel empowered, and they have to feel comfortable, and they have to feel confident with any new initiative and any new tool. So the focus of Group Two in our task force was capacity building with our adults and our staff. So professional learning, focus on professional learning, offering tailored programs to help our staff learn the different AI programs that are out there, that our district already has, has already vetted some of the programs that, and resources that are out there. Support structures, making sure that at the building level that our teachers have those supports when they are ready to implement AI in their classrooms, that if they need any support, that there's availability there for them. And as well as peer learning communities, opportunities for organic conversations centered around best practices using AI in the classroom. So that is, was a focus of Group Two. And then we also, this year, some of the outcomes that we had was for professional learning, there was opportunities to present to staff through different SIP days. There were also podcasts that were given to, podcast opportunities for staff to listen to how AI has been implemented in different aspects of education. As well as the Innovation Ambassador Program has been an integral part in exposing and exploring AI in the classrooms and best practices and allowing teachers just to have conversations about AI. And there is some optional IPSD Academy coursework that is available this summer. So for staff that would like to learn more about AI.
Our third group was really building capacity for our stakeholders. And for stakeholders, we're really talking about our students and our community members. We know that in order to prepare students, that we need to give them some essential skills on how to use AI programs ethically and responsibly, right? We know that a lot of, a lot of these tools can be used in ways that, 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 that teachers would not like them to, to be used. And we know that there's that digital citizen conversation. So we are, we realize that we really need to sponsor and create a learning environment for our students that is ethical, and we also teach them that digital responsibility of how to use it. that is ethical and we also teach them that digital responsibility of how to use it. We also want them to learn how they can use it for their for their benefit. There are some, there's some great instructional benefits for using these AI tools that can help students to formulate their ideas and to really serve almost as a, almost as a tutor for for a lot of our students. So we knew that there was a lot that we need to do for our students and our community members moving forward for ours with our stakeholders.
All right, we're going to go backwards just a little bit. I think we have an older version of the presentation here. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of Niqua Valley. Each of the middle schools and the elementary schools through the Innovation Ambassadors had a prepared presentation to share with their staff. Each of the high schools kind of took it our own way, much more variety in what we're going to use AI for and a little bit more openness for our students next year too. So a big picture here, we kind of started off with Blaine Sphur presenting how this will change teaching and learning. And to get us to think a little bit about the idea that there's an old statement we've used for years at a bunch of the high schools. If kids can Google the answer, why are you asking the question? Well, AI even expands that a little bit more into those pieces there. So we started with that and just kind of went through thinking through it. We had the initial fear of let's block it to hey, how can we use this? And that word comes up again and again throughout all this to enhance what we're doing, to engage students, to improve teaching and learning. We're all lifelong learners and that's our goal. We cannot hide from it. We got to move forward with it. We then moved into two different groups at Niqua Valley High School. One of the groups just did a general presentation on a couple of the tools that we'll talk about in a minute. Just to give teachers an overview of what they could be used for. Our big focus, right off the bat, is teacher productivity. How can we help you help your students? That's what it comes back to for everything that we do in professional development at all of the buildings when it gets into that. Then we did a little bit of a deeper dive to talk a little bit more about the student side of it. We're not quite there yet because we haven't opened it up for students. And to be honest with you, we're not going to learn how to use it with students until we're using it with students. You know, that is my challenge here. I've dabbled a little bit in some things that are connected, some tools we already use in the AI piece, but the true AI thing, until we can open it up next year and I can have the kids in chat GPT and I can have them in Magic Student and different things like that that will create these generative AI tools that will help us brainstorm. That's probably the biggest word we're going to use with kids is brainstorm your ideas and then work you through the process of that learning experience. And we went from there. And then I think we'll just in general talk about the tools that we kind of went through. And we can always share this list with you later if you guys don't have the full access to this presentation. The big ones here, are they up in the background here or not? There we go. Yep. All right, so we've got a list of several here, but we just wanted to quickly give you kind of an idea of what these look like in terms of the ones that through the task force, we've decided we're going to look at. Magic School, Magic Student, really two sides of the same, two different sides of the same coin here are these generative AI tools that allow you to do a bunch of different resources here. And I'm not going to spend a bunch of time on this, but it has a customizable chatbot where you can go in and actually have those conversations. And some of this is just kind of one of our biggest tools that we use, and I'm not going to run you through all this here, is give us some help with multiple choice. I will tell you, most textbooks don't write the best multiple choice questions. They just don't. I worked in textbooks for years, especially science, they don't. This helps me write questions. I don't think I've ever used a question verbatim from these ones here. But like one of the tools that I love is I can put a YouTube video in there and actually have it write questions for me. And then it'll timestamp those and then I can go through as I watch the video and decide whether or not that's a question I could use or if it's just a discussion point that we make. So it's a great brainstorming tool for me for that. And then Copilot is more of one of those kind of chat. This is your brainstorming partner and you can ask it anything. And it's the one we decided this is a district we're going to use right now. And the idea here for these is so much better than Google. I saw a great analogy. Google search is kind of like going to a restaurant and just ordering off the menu without any help. You're going to make your best guess based on the descriptions and you're going to pick and choose. Whereas your chat now brings in that waiter or that host that can help you now tailor your menu a little bit more. So not only are you reading the description of the menu, but you're able to ask questions, get responses and go forward. So this is a conversation you would have in generative AI. It'll also do stuff like create, which we'll look at some of the other tools here too. Photos and things like that, you can spend a lot of time going down that rabbit hole of looking for actual things. Now, when I use the chatbots, I use them to enhance the stuff that I'm creating. Instead of going and finding an article and trying to copy and paste maybe a paragraph about some content environmental science, I can tailor it down and keep tailoring it down until I get exactly what I want my kids to see. And it's been a challenge, but it's been an experience for me here too. And then I always have to remember to make sure I cite that for my kids and model that piece.
Okay, so just a fair warning, there's a little fun music involved in this, so brace yourself. This is going to give you a quick synopsis, little overview on a great product from Adobe called Adobe Firefly. So I'll let you watch it and then I'll talk to it. Oh, hopefully there's sound. Where's my sound?
It's funny.
So one of the ways that my one of the ways that my students had used this program in a unit where we were making a restaurant, they were using this to create their own logos. And so they were using this generative AI feature of Adobe Firefly and having a great time designing by using this. And the vocabulary they have to use to get descriptive, as you can see, it's very descriptive. And they want them to use very colorful and vibrant vocabulary when they're entering in their ideas. It's pretty powerful, so.
That'll be one of our big focuses with students is what they call generating those prompts for the AI and being able to do those pieces here because it is not as simple as just simply saying, I want a picture of a unicorn flying on top of a hill singing a song. You actually go through layers and layers and are constantly refining these. It's one of the cooler things that I've played with in terms of being able to get started, get an idea and then refine that idea down, whether it's an image or a piece of text. One of the things that I'm going to do with my students next year is actually have a rap battle between some between some favorite famous environmentalists and use that as my introduction to those people and then have them pull out what's true, what isn't true. Can you find anything there? Do you see any bias? All the things that we're worried about AI doing, we're going to use as part of our teaching process.
So in in looking at the student experience, we, at the three levels, we're going to, for the elementary level, we're going to leverage our LMC directors who already do lessons with their students based on digital citizenship. And we're going to use them in order to add some of that informational and digital citizenship for elementary school students, giving them just an overview, just basic information about AI at the elementary school level.
And because AI fits so seamlessly technology curriculum, we actually did a scope and sequence for the sixth through eighth grade level. And I'll be going into a little bit more detail on the next slide.
And you've already heard me talk about high school a little bit. For us, it's going to be a collaborative experience. We're going to be using the tools and talking to each other and figuring out the best practices. And it's going to be a process for us. It's not going to happen overnight. We're not probably all going to use it in the best ways immediately. But that's the nice thing about being at the high school level is we can collaborate across departments and share a lot of great ideas. And we have a few groups that are going to start working on that.
And our digital computational thinking grant that we have with through NSF on computational thinking with digital promise has been really valuable this year as we enter our fifth year with that work. Not only have we learned from other districts to be able to partner with five other districts within this area and really learn how are they introducing this to staff, what are they evaluating and what tools are they selecting and why? That learning has really been valuable for us. And one of the most recent white papers highlighted a couple of the skills that are really valuable that we've already highlighted because of that work. One is being the media literacy that we talked about in elementary school. And the second one that we see very strong at elementary school and middle school is digital readiness. And that third piece is computational thinking. So those AI literacy building blocks, we really have been able to leverage over the past couple of years through that work and had some really good, strong practices in place because of that. So as we look
Okay, so there's a slide missing, but we're just going to talk about it. So because as I talked about, we discovered that the curriculum or the middle school level was just a great place to focus AI learning. We looked at our lessons and we just did a little revising to have some AI focus at each of the levels. And so for the essential tech level, which is our sixth grade level, we focused it on what is AI? So this is going to be a tiered level. And so the first, it starts with what is AI with an ethical focus on, you know, the equal access to AI and also the algorithmic biases that we see within AI. And then at the seventh grade, the creative tech level, we're looking at engaging with AI. And our ethical focus there is how AI is impacting our society. And then when we get to our eighth grade level, which is our technology revolution classes, we're looking at creating with AI. And our ethical focus there is the moral dilemmas that programming with AI can have. So each level is offering its own exposure to the topics of AI.
So the fourth group worked really closely with groups two and three and really were charged with three tasks. One, how are we going to evaluate all these resources that we are constantly seeing in the marketplace? What are we going to recommend for some student use as well as teacher use? And then how do we continue this momentum moving forward, which was in strong collaboration with group two? Steve and Shelley highlighted some of the resources that we are going to recommend as of now for next year. Go ahead and move to the next slide. The first one is at Mag School that Steve highlighted. When we looked at all these resources, not only did we want to have strong instructional benefit, we wanted to be easy to use for teachers. We really wanted to look at the potential biases and risks with using these potential resources. But then ultimately, one of the most important parts was the data privacy protection and making sure that they're following all the state and national guidelines related to that. When we looked at the second one and we started evaluating the generative AI resources, Microsoft Copilot initially stood out because of the way in which we can protect the data and stay in-house. The chats aren't saved and all the information stays within our own environment is not leaked out. And the final two, Canom and Adobe are really nice resource for generative AI, more on the design side and are embedded into resources that we already have. That's one of the things that we're constantly seeing now, the resources that we purchase are continuing to evaluate and add AI into their resources. For example, Google is constantly adding AI resources in their most recent additions, practice sets, have some really nice AI features that embed resources for students and teachers. So we're seeing it more and more into the resources that we buy and we will continue to. And the final part that we did for our, that group was really looking at the instructional design of our classrooms and how can we support that conversation at the building level? Our group had a really strong makeup of classroom teachers, some department chairs at the high school level, LMC director, as well as some district staff from our, from the CNI side as well as the tech services side. And what does this look like? We know that, as Steve mentioned, there is a huge continuum of AI in the classroom all from brainstorming all the way to AI generated content. And so we wanted to build that kind of framework, not knowing that there is a black and white answer, that there's going to be a lot of gray areas and really helping our teams have those strong conversations at the building level about what that'll look like in their instruction and their design. And that that conversation will continue as we move forward. So as we continue to look and review, this work will continue to be ongoing. I think one of the most important things that we're looking at is to continue the conversation and supporting our building level conversations. Some of the best learning that we're seeing is from peer to peer in the hallways and PLC teams. How do we support those conversations and allow time for that? Hey, I use it this way, use it for this way. This is how I inform students about it, really leveraging that information. We built some summer courses for staff to take next, in the summer to learn about AI and really have good conversations. We have some resources that they will use to kind of, some building blocks for information we'll use for that learning. And then we're going to continue our task force convening next year. We're going to meet twice, once in the fall and once in the spring. How are we doing? Reevaluate and continue that learning and resource sharing as we go along. So this was an opportunity to kind of share with you our work and what we've done. And we're more than happy to ask you questions at this time.
All right, thank you. So I wonder if our students have any questions or comments that you would like to ask on this presentation? It can come up to sit up here.
So Mr. Wick is my teacher actually for APES. And what we, we haven't used it pretty extensively for APES at all, but we have introduced sort of like, introduce it to our class, which I think is really important because I know a lot of my friends and a lot of people at our school especially have used it to like write essays. Mind you, these aren't like award winning essays, they're very clearly written by like a robot. But it's important that we like recognize that it is a tool that we can use and it's also a tool that we should be kind of accepting to and Mr. Wick has done a great job at that. And then part of me also thinks back to my sophomore year last year for Honest Chemistry. When Paula Mueller was kind of in and out in her last few months as a teacher at NIWA, it was really hard and I often struggled a lot with, you know, basic chemistry topics because you know, it's hard when you don't have a teacher there. Chemistry is hard in general, but I think back to that point, I think back and I think if I had something that could be there at any odd hour of the night that I could rely on, that could kind of help me at my pace to learn, I think that could have been some of the most helpful things. Granted, I didn't do great in sophomore chemistry, but I think having something like that would have been monumental. Whereas I know kids that struggle with all sorts of topics. And I think having a tool like this that can work with them at their own pace can be probably one of the best things for them.
Thank you. He's got a new job.
So first I'll just say that I think the work you're doing is very exciting. And especially just from my perspective, all I've heard about AI from my teachers is just, you know, don't use it. I mainly heard about it in like English classes because, you know, people try to have it write their essays for them. I'm not taking any technology education courses currently, so maybe it's a different story over there. But I do think it's very promising work that you're doing. I do have a one question. I don't know if you need like an answer right now, but I'm just wondering how will the district use AI in collaboration with pre-existing tutoring programs in school and out of school? And how can it be used without outright replacing them? And then just kind of like to elaborate, how might, how might using AI affect local tutors and academic enrichment slash support programs such as like Kumon is what comes to mind for me? And then does the district hold any responsibility for such businesses' ability to be successful in our area? Because obviously those businesses would rely pretty heavily on, you know, our district's presence. So that's just something that came to mind.
I'll, I'll address part of that, only the other ones in writing. That's very insightful actually and really good questions. I think of the tutoring piece, I think of a conference, Dr. Talia and I and some other people were at, or a Luda Conference where a futurist, did you know futurist was a thing? Sign me up. So a futurist spoke about tutoring and personalized learning for students will be done better by an AI than by a human soon. Because it can quickly adapt to students. It can even read facial features, how frustrated are they getting? Do they need a brain break? So those kind of pieces, I do think, you know, I don't know that tutoring businesses will go, go out of business. But I do know that the tools that we're using are more and more enhanced and use generative AI in them. We're looking at formative assessment tools as part of the team. And all of the assessment tools constantly are using, well, based on the assessment, here are practice sets that generative AI has created for the student. So instead of me looking at maybe as students, what they've done and their outcomes and designing some sort of practice for them, that's already designed for them. So we're seeing more and more of that happen. So what I really think it'll be able to do is to customize that learning experience for the student and ensure that they're getting what they need. And I think that's really what we want to do as teachers. But we want to ensure, and that's why part of our guiding principles that was that it doesn't replace that human connection. Because what we find is that there are certain things and there were, I don't want to be quoted on them. But again, according to some of the futurists, there are certain things that AI and generative AI will do better than humans. But there are certain things that it will never be able to do. And one of them is empathy. And so, and a teacher kind of has to start leaning and leaning into more of that social emotional learning and understanding their students on that human level. Because that's what they're gonna need and that'll never be replaced by AI.
I also think if you look at it from a, an equity standpoint, right? Like accessing the, those tutoring services and tutors is, is, is a privilege that not every student has. And a lot of these AI resources can provide access for students who otherwise would not have those opportunities. So I think there, there's, there's, there's trade-offs, right?
Yeah, for sure.
With everything. But from an equity standpoint, it, it, it does provide access and opportunity for all.
And then one last piece because I've actually, I work in one of our after-school programs, helping some students who are struggling in certain classes. And I'm the only science teacher in there, well, I teach environmental science right now. If you know, science, chemistry, physics, those types of classes like Sohail talked about, I don't know a lot of that. So I've actually sat with students and worked through some chemistry problems with them, using the AI on the side to help me work backwards with them so we could understand the problem. So it didn't pull me as a tutor out, it gave me something to support them, cause I'm like, I don't remember how to do molarity. I haven't taught that in probably 20 years. The AI, I sat next to it, because otherwise you go into these Google searches for that stuff and you end up in all these, behind all these paid windows. Where to get that solution to solve that problem and work your way backwards, you have to do that. Whereas the AI was pretty quick. Now, again, the flaw in that system is I don't know if I'm a hundred percent accurate, because I don't know the material as well as the AI. But it gave us a starting point to start to work through it and build a little bit on those skills for kids. It's helped me a ton in that after-school program, more than I ever would have thought it did.
And I think to your point, you, knowing how to interact with the AI is an important skill. And so they're using your example of will that put the tutoring places, you know, at a disadvantage? That could be another just skill that maybe the tutoring places will start to have to tutor on, is how are you interacting with that, right? We're always learning and teaching for these new skills that are yet to be known to be needed, right?
Thank you. Mr. Rising, do you have any questions?
You know, you. So I agree. I think the idea is wonderful for exploring concepts, you know, tutoring learning and that type of thing. My, my real, my main concern here is around, right? Again, my first simple question is, are, especially our high schools, so I guess Mr. Wick, are, are teachers using right now, these teacher knowledge, using programs such as like, I don't wanna, but I don't need to call out names, but like Turnitin, where, you know, that Turnitin program looks, it's, it's writing for AI, like you detect it, plagiarism, original work, similarity of work and just out there. Are we using any, anything like that right now?
So for our high schools in a way in which we support all that work and everything with that, we do have a resource to support our ELA teachers with that. We're constantly evaluating which resource is the right one, especially as the field changes. But there are some resources out there that we currently purchase to support them in that work. One of the things that we are kind of working through that process in relation to the ELA social studies specifically is if that resource is flagging AI content, making sure that there's a really strong human connection there and making sure that our teachers have a really good relationship with their students. Because what we're seeing is the research is not necessarily always reliable, that if it's flagging AI, it may or may not be. So we wanna make sure that our teachers are really involved in that process and having really, really good, strong relationships with our students. And we continue to lead with how important that is.
Okay, I mean, and, you know, I, I know we're not proving anything, but this is kind of giving us an initial update of the one that's being, being taken place and then you'll come to us again. But I just wanna express that I have some real concerns, or is it, I understand AI is here to stay, right? It's not going away. But I also think it's a great learning opportunity where we can start teaching the kids, like listen, this is the process you go through to write stuff, this is how the strategy you do. This is, this is the ethics that goes along with writing, because my concerns, we're gonna have to look at the policy which we already have, which is seven, one ninety, about that, you know, specifically said. Is it against using any type of AI or writing tools or artificial intelligence to play the original work? You know, I'm worried that we're raising this too much. And then as soon as these kids go off to college, when it comes to writing, there is a no tolerance policy for any AI type of writing tool. So I understand that this AI can spark critical thinking. However, I also think it can hinder critical thinking significantly. And we need to balance those to make sure we're not putting up our students for when they do write that they can't generate or formulate their own ideas and structure and that type of thing. So just wanna say that, I know you'll come to us with more on the future.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you guys for this presentation. I've been looking forward to this since ChatGPT was released. And just so interested in this field and spent this past year, probably majority of my sessions I attended in three different conferences were about AI. Just trying to get a handle on what are people doing with this? And I'm really pleased with what you guys have presented today, because I think it sounds really similar to what a lot of other school districts have done. Ohio, state of Ohio comes to mind as being some, what leaders in this field or at least taking that initiative or at least publishing or whatever they're putting out there with their policies and stuff. So my first question is, I know you had mentioned that you looked at some nearby districts and what they were doing. What beyond that have you consulted to see what are K through twelve districts doing with regard to AI, with regard to their policies? That they have policies that have already been written, are you looking to that? What, what have you done with that?
So in terms of professional learning, we've, I think, attended about every session you can imagine on this topic and what it looks like. As I mentioned, we're part of, we're, we're part of that AI working group through Digital Promise and really looking with Iowa City, County, or Talladega, two schools in New York and what they're doing. And we're, we're very much aligned to what they are doing in their school districts and the policies. We've also looked at what some colleges are doing in terms of their policies and what that looks like in syllabuses. And that's where some of that policy or the belief statement and some of the guiding principles that we had through where that task force kind of came out.
Yeah, I really like that guiding principle and the flexibility of interpretation in there. Another question I have is, is this something you envision teachers kind of figuring out how they want to utilize it? Like seeing it as a tool, like this wouldn't be something prescribed on them, on them, but something that, hey, here's another tool you could use. But depending on your teaching style, you might integrate it this way or this way. Like, how do you see it playing out?
I can talk about that a little bit. Again, this is gonna be something that's going to change tomorrow and next week and the month after. It's not something that we can say this is what it's gonna look like at any given point right now, because the tools are rolling out there. The ability of the AI is advancing tremendously. So are some of the other things on the other side that might be things we get involved with for checking to see if students are using AI and those types of things. I, I think our big piece here will be to prepare students to use it as both part of their education, but also ultimately as part of tools that they'll use for workforces. You know, I think that that's another emerging thing that we, well, aren't teaching, have to be prepared for, is how can this be used to help you do whatever job you choose in the future? So for us, it'll come down to the skills again, and that's what we'll emphasize to the teachers, is what kind of skills can you help students do with the AI? The, the word we're gonna use the most often is brainstorming. How can this help you brainstorm through that process? We're not eliminating the process. Will kids use this to write an essay without thinking about it? Of course they will, they've been doing that already, whether we block it or not, they can find ways to get essays. What we wanna do is make sure we teach them and help them work through those ethical, those bias, those misinformation pieces. Not catch them, but instead help them learn to use this as a tool that could enhance their learning experience. Just like Sohail said earlier, this would have been a nice thing sometimes when he was trying to study something in chemistry and just couldn't find that answer. Could have an AI chatbot helped him work through that problem, so then he could demonstrate his understanding on another day. So you can't ever look at this in isolation, it's gotta be the big picture of that whole entire learning process, both for us as teachers and for the students. And we're gonna evolve, as AI evolves, we're gonna evolve as educators and we're gonna collaborate a ton, you'll hear that word from us all the time, to kind of try to figure this out. And I won't tell you that we have all the answers yet.
And there's two other things, the middle school team that Shelley's a part of, though they're really nice experience for students that are, that is already leveraging our course outcomes to really highlight this. So that when they walk into our high schools in a few years, they really have had that leverage and that, that idea generation of what this looks like and how, what can I leverage it for my learning? And I think I don't wanna highlight the, we're also gonna see this more embedded into things that we purchase. So it's gonna be part of our ecosystem, a little bit more easier for our teachers and students can grasp it and take advantage of as part of our system.
And I think ultimately, it's gonna force our instruction to change, right? Just like, just like when calculators, I mean, I'm sure everyone's heard that analogy, just like calculators came about, people worried that people won't be able to do math. But what it did is it freed, it freed for more complex math problems, you know? Same thing with like photo math when it came, that it could solve the problems. But what, what that then allowed, the, the, the teaching shifted into explanation of, of how to get to those answers. Very, not, not very different than when we had in, in the back of our textbooks, the odd answers in the back of our textbooks, right? I remember going back and seeing the math problems and all the odd problems were in the back. I still had to learn how to do the, the problem and had to explain it, even though I had the answer. So I think what's gonna end up happening is that our, our, our teaching is gonna have to change, our instruction is gonna have to change. And we're, we're, we're slowly, as this evolves, I think we're, we're working with our staff and our, and our students to, to work and learn with it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. In, in higher ed, we're seeing, especially in EL, in English department and I'm in the part of communication department and a lot of academic dishonesty. And so to board member Rising's point, it is a very real point and it is probably, and, and I, I really love this slide that you have on slide number eight with the risks and the benefits. And I also appreciate that you stated that you may enter the room just thinking about the risks, but you probably will leave the room only thinking about the, the benefits. And how do we all get to that point? I think we just need more information on how to manage these scenarios that we have in, in our mind about. We want our students to be able to write, we want them to be able to articulate their thoughts in an organized fashion, being critical thinkers, citing sources appropriate responsibly. How do we make sure we do that and also be able to use AI responsibly, which I think you guys are speaking to? So I appreciate board member Rising's question on that and I appreciate your answers with the tools that you're giving ELA instructors and social studies instructors. So I'll just end with one kind of general question. Are we making AI tools available to all? Like, I, I know, what was the slide that says that, it, it was at in, up at the beginning that says we'll be releasing the AI tools on their Chrome, Chrome computers? Their Chromebooks, I mean, is that to all students all at once or are we scaling it? How, how is that being released?
Most private policies for these tools are thirteen and over. So really next year, we're really focusing on the high school. High school will have access to most of it, the younger grades will not. So that's why the elementary school is just going to introduce almost like just, this is what it is, this is how it's created, the background of it. Same thing with middle school, but really it's gonna be high school is where, is where they'll have access to.
The tools that we already have access to like Canva and Adobe, like the Adobe Firefly, those are the ones that middle school will have access to, we already currently do. But the new ones that they're gonna open up, those would go to high school.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dunning.
Thank you as always. And as I looked at Adobe Firefly, just a little levity this evening, tonight is the Met Gala. And if you're familiar with the Met Gala, and I, and so I'm looking at the Adobe Firefly and I'm like, oh my gosh, I wonder if there's some costumes that were created and generated, generation ideas using AI. So anyway, interesting to see, interesting, we'll have a chance to see what some of those costumes look like. But anyway, can you share or, or do we already have built in what the, is there an investment for us with the AI, different platforms that we're using? Is that something that's already been built in that we're gonna see with our budget?
So right now, we have, we're leveraging the tools that we have. We have, we did write a grant with, with the state to, to try and pilot an additional resource that would be add-on to what we already purchased. But we have not heard back, we've gotten that grant yet.
Okay, so there, I, I was just trying to, just trying to understand from my edification. So there, we do have, there is a financial investment that's embedded in our, that, that we'll see with our budget for AI, different tools, that's all, that's what I'm asking.
Specifically, these are tools that we already invest in.
Okay.
And so, yeah, and they're just adding AI-enhanced features.
Okay.
So instead of, you know, quickly jumping to a new tool, we realized that many of these tools are catching up. So if a tool that we don't have comes up with something new, many times the tools that we currently have access to are right there behind. So that's one of the things that we looked at is how can we kind of stay consistent with our spending on resources? And ensure that they still are able to do all the things that we want to. But we are looking at what sort of, where are any possible gaps? And do we have to invest further in any tools? At this time, we don't find that we need to.
Thank you. Slide twenty-three, I, I really loved when you talked about outcomes at the different areas of student experience and you've mentioned this just a little bit ago. On the elementary side, as we talked about digital citizenship and kind of sharing with them a little bit of what AI is all about. I know that, are we doing any of that type of exposure with our high school students as they begin to, you know, get access? Just, I'm not asking if we're spending a, you know, a semester teaching them what they should do with it. But is there some type of exposure and as we do our parent universities, I envision that some of that will be incorporated into what we're sharing? So can you talk a little bit about that?
So our high schools are each building that out right now to introduce our students next year, so that when, when AI is introduced to students for the first time, that they are onboarded appropriately. Because we also know that going through the sixth through eighth grade sequence won't be live until at least next year for a student. So then our buildings are working through that right now of how they're gonna introduce that to students. It might look slightly different in each building, but we give them that autonomy and that flexibility to do that. And they're gonna take the lead on making sure that our students are onboarded.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll be practicing some of that onboarding, Sohail doesn't know this yet, the day, the couple of days after our AP exam. So I'm gonna work with the students to kind of get a little better sense of what they already know, I have some ideas. And then I'm gonna work them through some of those different main things, just kind of some of the big vocabulary. And then some of those pieces like bias and we'll talk about how AI can hallucinate, and that's a big term right now, and some of those different pieces. And then it's something we're gonna build out. And it's definitely something that's gonna get rolled into our syllabi over the summer and something that will continue some staff development over the summer with some recommendations. And here's where we can start. In terms of exactly where it's gonna fit into the curriculums, it's gonna probably vary from course to course. Obviously, ELA and social studies are going to have a big focus on the writing experience. Science is going to be a lot about helping you problem solve and critically think. I think a lot of the other courses like art, I know art did a big project on comparing their ability to create something versus the AI. And what differences did they make? That was an experiment that happened with one of our digital art classes just about a month ago. So it's, again, it's gonna not be something that we have an immediate plan for coming out of high school, only because this is new to us and it's new to the students. But we are gonna build on it and we are gonna make it part of that learning process in probably almost all of our courses when it really comes down to it.
And just two last things. One, following up on Ms. Shane, I'm in higher education too, not directly in the classroom, but it is certainly something that continues to be, that our professors are grappling with. So while we do have, we, we may wonder, is this appropriate for us to bring into the secondary level? Our students are dealing and grappling with it at the higher, at the higher education level. So I think it's really incumbent upon us to help prepare them, help show them the correct way to use it, because they are gonna be exposed as they get to the second, to the higher education, higher education level. So it, you know, I certainly. So it, uh, you know, I certainly understand and respect, uh, uh, and, and feel for exactly what you're saying, Mr. Rising. Uh, you know, but, but I do appreciate us taking the initiative because, uh, we hopefully can help lessen some of those pain points as they move into the higher education post-secondary, um, realm. So thank you so much. And then the last thing, one of the things that Ms. Jane said, I so appreciate you doing that collaboration. That was going to be one of my questions, but learning, uh, not only learning from others, but I hope, and because we are always leaders in so many areas. So I hope some of the things that we learn from all of our stakeholders, that we have a chance, it's a great chance for us to help, uh, educate other districts as we move forward and all of us learn more and more about AI. So thanks a lot.
Quickly on, on that collaboration, I mean, we, I remember Tanya sending me things like, here's what Australia wrote or here's what Indonesia came up with or Louisiana. So we're constantly looking and saying, you know, what, what is happening, right? In other states, in the world, in other districts, um, and ensuring that we're moving forward based on the needs of our stakeholders. But we're also informed by best practices around the world, really.
Ms. Kents. Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for the presentation. Obviously, you know, this is an ever-changing thing. And to be honest, I, I think it's safe to say the majority of, of parents don't necessarily fully understand all the intricacies of it either. So a presentation like this is wonderful because I think some of the fear in general from anyone comes from a lack of understanding fully AI's capabilities. And then you do just hear about the negative unfortunately first. So honestly, a presentation showing all the positive ways you can work with AI to actually enhance the student's experience is so amazing. And I think what everyone really needs to hear, I, I did wonder over the next few years, are you guys going to be continuing to be kind of the, the point people, the go-to people to keep it? As I know, as you guys said, it changes every day, to kind of keep bringing it back to the, the schools and administrators?
We hope that the task force can keep coming together. Also, that document that we created is a fluid document. So we might come back to it in the fall and realize like we, we got some things wrong. Let's change some things up, some definitions, some guiding principles. Um, so yes, we hope that the task force and continue to diversify the task force either. We'll keep coming back to reexamine, um, where we go.
Perfect. Would you guys even maybe have some students on it? Start adding some high schoolers, give some feedback or at least get some feedback from them? You know, about how it's been working for them and kind of take that into consideration?
Hundred percent. Go ahead. Yeah, I was going to say that, that is something we want all stakeholders and that's why getting the parents involved, um, and the caretakers through the parent university and getting, um, their voice is important and the student voice is extremely important. Um, one of the, we, we definitely see it once, once they're able to actually access it on their Chromebooks.
Right.
Then kind of bringing them in and seeing like, what does it look like? Cause they can maybe speak now to their personal experience of this, but then how would their district experience inform the work that we do is definitely important.
Great, no, I love hearing that. Uh, and yeah, actually you touched on my last thing too. At the very end, I was going to be asking about, you know, parents, how we could, you know, help get the information out to them too. So I'm very excited to hear that we are going to be doing at least one parent university, hopefully maybe multiple. But, um, so no, just thank you guys again. I know we'll be hearing totally different things from you the next time we talk, but all of this really does sound great.
Mr. Krubus.
Slide thirteen. This is the one that really spoke to me kind of as a school board member. We're doing an integration plan. We're not, um, just plopping, uh, this tool into the classroom. You know, here's a cell phone, here's the internet, here's a computer. We're talking about integrating it and so that really spoke to me. You know, and then we're considering the ethics of the situation and then how we're going to implement it. So this one was the powerful one for me, maybe because I operate in the big picture world and don't have to actually interact with students that often. But it also deals with prioritizing ethical considerations. And that's a nice way to say, kind of on a spectrum, the academic, academic dishonesty. And so part of this, which has been referenced before is how do we define that? And then what's the punishment for it? And how do we teach where that line is as the line changes? So we can promote the ethical considerations, but then it's also going to be, when is their academic dishonesty? I'm using the tool, you gave it in class and I, I wrote this paper using this tool. How much needs to be using the tool? How much of it does, does it, do I need to be involved with it before it's my original work? Maybe it's not the, the words on the paper, but the original work is interacting with the tool. So I'm looking forward to the ethical considerations and the whole spectrum of that with the other end being the academic dishonesty. And I, part of integrating it is also making sure that we put bumpers on it so that we are dealing with, in our existing laws, our existing policies. You know, we're talking about the academic dishonesty, but then what about bullying? What about harassment? You know, you saw how quickly pictures were changing there. There is the teaching it ethically, this is what we're going to use it for. But then also we need to punish people that use it in a bullying manner, um, harassing people, intimidating people. And so that needs to be taught that, hey, there's a line here now. That it's a great tool, but it can also be, um, used in inappropriate ways. So we're integrating that with our existing bull, bullying policy. And so I look forward to hearing with some particularity on how that plan kind of develops, um, the integration. Then I would also be worried about kind of student privacy. Uh, I think there's a, a quick way to jump from, um, you know, you can generate a whole speech that I put together and I didn't really put it together. Maybe that violates my privacy even though I didn't, I wasn't involved with it. So how do we define, uh, student privacy when there's ways, um, to kind of, um, get my likeness or information out there in a very convenient and easy way? And the, and so how do we integrate that into our classroom and instruct on it? I look forward to hearing more on that. And we talked about implementing it at the high school level, but there's still kind of an age appropriate aspect to it. And so there's still bumpers on that, that, all right, what is age appropriate? But what, how do I use it in this classroom? You know, if you look at our board agenda, it took two agenda items and a consent agenda item to approve a book. And so you can see how the existing state laws are old and archaic and we're kind of moving beyond that. So how do we make sure that we can assure the board, the public that we're using this tool in an age appropriate manner, especially as we build it down from the high school level? The, the law and the reason we had that policy on approving the book was to make sure that, hey, this is the book. You have a chance to review it. Any objections and complaints, get to it before we approve it. But now we have tools that are moving faster than that archaic process. Um, so the public, the board, the community needs to make sure that this is the plan and we're also putting bumpers on it to make sure that although the law is archaic, we're still doing the things that the law wanted us to do to make sure that it's appropriate for the, the classroom. And then kind of the discriminer, discrimination aspect to it. You know, we got to make sure that it's equal opportunity for everybody, but then we're also not discriminating. And we've seen some of that in the public and it was been mentioned here before. So I think, you know, there's a, a lot of ways to say, these are the limits and these are, we're going to use it. But part of implementing that and buying into it is making sure that, well, I don't want to, here, here's my objection or here's my problem. I don't want to get behind a plan that is going to discriminate or that is not going to be age appropriate. So look, we have this concern, but we've gone through it. And this is how we develop the, the guidelines we're going to use to make sure. And so just from page thirteen, ethical considerations, I blew that up a little bit further. Page eleven was important to me on gathering continuous feedback. And so I, you mentioned this, that it's going to be changing constantly. And so we're going to need to hear from, um, the students, the teachers, the community on, this is not working. We love this area. So I love the fact that your, um, your goal is, uh, and challenge is really continuous feedback. So that, I appreciate the fact that that was in there. So no questions, just some partific, pontification. Thank you.
If I could just, um, I, I really love the points that you raised. I also think of when we're putting bumpers on things, how we're ensuring that we're not limiting the access to students. Right, it's a fine line because we can put bumpers on a tool that's a free tool that's on the student's Chromebook. Um, but if we limit it to a certain extent and then everyone else in their personal uses may be paying for a premium tool, now we're actually widening the gap of accessibility for students, right? So how are we ensuring that we're not widening that gap of accessibility? But at the same time, being ethical and being, um, you know, and, and thinking about that discrimination piece also. So thank you for those points.
So thank you very much. It's a very challenging topic. And as you heard from a, a number of board members, it tends to come out negatively in the news, right? From academic, you know, cheating or whatever, or image alteration. And so it is interesting to, um, have a discussion that is looking at the power of this tool. As somebody that programmed game theory in the late seventies, I would never have imagined working on those simple programs and simple logic, trying to get, to win different simple games has evolved like it has, um, today with, um, the capabilities that are available with these tools. And it is, um, exciting, but it's also really frightening. Um, and, um, for me, I thought slide fourteen was very important. And I did throughout the talk, see the word ethics and, uh, responsibility. So, um, the whole concept of digital responsibility is something that has to be taught and reinforced from kindergarten on with, um, all of these tools. And I'm glad to see that emphasized in this work and the thoughts that you've put forward, um, with, uh, this presentation. So it is some, uh, something that we all were looking forward to because we are, um, seeing it in the news a lot and, um, want to see how it can be used in an appropriate and, um, welcoming way within the district. Um, so thank you. And I think it's incredibly important to keep this task force going into the future. And this is going to evolve constantly. So thank you so much.
Thank you. No questions. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have a budget presentation from Mr. Matt Shipley. If you, if you, it's up to you if you want to stay or. All right, if you want to stay through part, just get up and leave one.
Thank you guys. Honestly, you had such great insight and questions too. Thank you.
All right. So good evening, members of the Board of Education. Uh, as President Don, you mentioned, I'm here to give a budget and forecast update. That's in line with Board Policy four dot one zero and Strategic Plan Priority Number Four. Uh, tonight's agenda, I'd like to just kind of give an update on our current year financials. Uh, we're now ten months through the year, so we are, we are wrapping up yet another school year. And we do have, uh, updated financial information I can share. Uh, I'll then present an updated, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget. Just a few updates from the last presentation we had in February. Uh, I will again share our non-operating funds forecast. Again, those will have some updates from what we shared at the February board meeting. I'm going to present some comparable district analysis. This is sort of an annual, uh, update to, to information, I believe the board's seen in the past about how we stack up against several comparable districts as well as state averages in various areas of the budget. And finally, I just want to share a few details with the board of our safer, stronger two oh four proposal. Uh, as the Board of Education knows, the administration's been working hard on this proposal and we've started to share some information with the public. So I'd like to just spend a few, few minutes sharing some of that information tonight with the board, um, as well. Uh, no action is requested this evening on the budget. We will, um, start the process to formally approve the budget at the July Board of Education meeting. And similarly, no action is requested tonight on our safer and safer, stronger two oh four proposal. Again, we're just looking to inform the board this evening on the work we've started in that area. So in February, uh, we did present the board with a five-year forecast and that forecast did show balanced budgets for each of the five years presented. Um, one of the challenges that we outlined and, and talked in some detail was the expiration of ESR funding. That is federal funding tied to the COVID relief bills, uh, that we've received for the last three years. That funding is, uh, sunsetting with the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And as a result, we are, um, planning on reducing our full-time equivalents, our staffing, uh, by about ten positions for next year. At this time, we're also forecasting similar reductions for the two following school years. Although I will say administration's already starting to, to work hard to try and find ways to minimize that impact for future years. When we reviewed the non-operating funds, we did discuss that our final bond payment on existing debt is scheduled to mature on December thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So just to reiterate, at that date, the district will be debt-free and will have paid off all of our building bonds. Uh, we also cover our capital projects fund, which will be spent down over the next two summers. And as a result, we'll be, um, out of funds by the end of twenty twenty-six with just minimal recurring funds available for capital projects. And then the final piece, which we had a little bit of discussion on in February, is just where we stood with our fund balance in alignment with our board policy. So our board policy states that our target is to have twenty-five percent of revenues in fund balance at year end. We are currently a little bit above that, um, policy amount, amount. And so we did suggest that some of that excess could be used to address facility needs or, or other needs of the district. Presented here is an updated projection for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, we're showing forecasted numbers through March thirty-first, which is again nine out of twelve months through our school year, about seventy-five percent. Um, we do see an, an increase in expenditures over the next three months, uh, just a lot of year-end expenditures. Um, we also have some significant payables and, and things that come due that are settled during the summer. Um, but part of using a forecasted numbers, we build all those estimates in and we're able to show a kind of trued-up year-to-date number against that, that, uh, annual budget. So what we're really showing is that we're coming in line with almost every revenue, um, with, with every revenue account being about over ninety-nine percent accurate with all revenue amounts, with the one exception being federal revenues. So, uh, although our ESR funding is, is expiring as of June thirtieth and we will have all the, um, uh, usage of those funds budgeted and expended by then, um, we're now thinking that there'll be a little bit of delay in receiving those payments. Um, just a lot of work at the state and federal level to get that processed. We've, we've seen some delays already in getting budgets approved and getting other aspects of that approved. So, uh, it's possible that that federal revenue is delayed and pushes forward into the next year. So, um, we're still entitled to the money. We still will receive it, but it's possible instead of receiving it in twenty twenty-four, we'll receive it in the next budget cycle. On the expenditure side, we are also tracking very close to budget. Um, the one, um, little deviation, which I believe we've discussed previously, is that we're, we're seeing, um, a, a greater use of contractual services and other purchases services as a way to fill vacancies and other hard-to-hire positions. And so we are, um, performing favorable to budget in salaries and benefits line items, but that's largely offset by that purchase services, um, area. We have about, uh, fifty individuals, uh, in total who are working with us through some sort of contractual service arrangement. Again, those are positions that traditionally we've hired and had, had a full-time employee working with us. But we, but we've seen a shift more towards that, that contractual service relationship. We are optimistic that as, as some of the pressures, uh, around staffing start to settle down a little bit, we'll be able to transition more of those positions back to salaries and benefits in the future. Looking, looking forward to where we are with the fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. Um, what we're showing this evening in that, that preliminary budget line is, is very similar to what we presented in February. There's just been a few. There's just been a few small adjustments to that number. So again, presenting a balanced budget showing about a $700,000 projected surplus for next year. Our property tax revenues are projected to increase 5.1% from next year. That's based on the current levy that was adopted last December and that bills went out for last week, as well as the assumption we will adopt a 3.4% increase in the 2024 levy. That is the Consumer Price Index number that we would be entitled to receive under PTAL. All approved salary increases and our 2024-2025 staffing plan that's currently being executed. And the budget also has been updated for all approved and anticipated renewals of significant contracts. So this evening, the board did approve a one-year extension to our transportation contracts. At a previous board meeting, we approved a custodial renewal, and we have a food service renewal anticipated to be presented to the board in, in June. So we've been able to update our budget for all three of those contracts. They all came in materially consistent with what we were budgeting back in, in February, and as a result, you'll, that's one of the main drivers of why we have a minimal change in, in tonight's budget. Although we're only showing one year of data this evening, I can confirm that our five-year forecast continues to project balanced budgets going forward. So we did receive our final extensions from both DuPage and Will Counties after, in March, that's after our last presentation of the board. And so I do want to briefly update the board on where we landed with those final extensions. First, as, as mentioned, bills for both counties went out on time. You'll remember when we presented the levy in November and December, we talked about how there were, there were some interesting dynamics going on in DuPage County. We were closely monitoring their progress as they went through a new system upgrade. They did cut it a little close to the deadline, but it does appear they, they made the deadline to get bills out by May 1st. And as a result, we should not see a delay in that first property tax installment in June. We received the final amount of new property from both counties. It totaled $54.1 million. When we presented the levy in December and when we presented our forecast in February, we were estimating $57 million. So we came in pretty, pretty close in line, just a little under that $57 million estimate. We presented a final tax rate estimate of 5.19, or excuse me, an estimate of 5.115. The actual tax rate came in at 5.192. So that is a decrease from the prior year's tax rate of 5.32. It's just not quite as significant as a decrease as we expected. So with that said, property values did increase more than the CPI, and that does lead to that decreased tax rate. You can see in the, the chart here, over the past 10 years, we've seen a 14% decrease in the total tax rate charged to our taxpayers. So that is a significant decrease from that peak value of just over six that we saw in 2014. As we project property tax rates going forward, this is traditionally pretty difficult to project, but we do believe from, as we talk with our assessors and our counties and we look at the housing market, we do expect to, to continue to see a consistent operating tax rate in general, meaning that property values are going to stay in line with them, with where they are now and continue to increase more or less in line with the Consumer Price Index. I do just want to cover one, one piece when we, we're going to start looking closely. Again, the information just came out in the last week or two, but we're going to do some review and just a deeper dive in some of the, the increases and, and change in property values we saw across the two counties. In general, Will County's increase in assessed value came in very close, effectively exact with the estimates we were provided. It's really DuPage County where we saw some variance, and that's why we were a little off on that new property and on that tax rate. Two potential causes for that, again, they were, they were integrating a new property tax system, so whether that indirectly or directly caused some, some, them to be a little off in the information we provided. The second potential increase is just that we saw some significant commercial appeals come through. So taxpayers are allowed to appeal their, their assessed value. This was a quadrennial reassessment year. Generally, you do see more appeals in that year. And you see more appeals generally with commercial industrial properties. And for our tax base, more of our commercial industrial tax base is in DuPage County. So my team will be kind of reviewing that information over the next couple of months, and it's, it's possible we make a recommendation to the board that going forward, we maybe get a little more involved in some of those appeals or, or just a little bit more involved in that process going forward. So just moving on to the non-operating funds, this is the bond and interest forecast that we're showing for the next five years. This has not changed since our February update. And just to reiterate, our current bond and interest levy will be eliminated once the bonds are repaid in December 30th of 2026, which will occur in our 2027 fiscal year. Again, just want to, just want to emphasize that with the property tax levies, we're, that'll be levied against the bond and interest, and with the current fund balance of that fund, we have sufficient funds to pay these bonds off in full. So there will be some funding that'll be available for other uses once these taxes are repaid, and that's estimated to be about $1.8 million. Moving on to our Capital Projects Fund, our second non-operating fund, we've made a slight change in here. We, we increased the local revenues budgeted here by $2 million for next year, and that's really to, to reflect the current interest rate environment. We've been monitoring interest rates very closely. Most of our funds are invested in, in short-term, less than a year, safe investments. So US Treasuries and other bank CDs, things that tie very closely with the Federal Reserve's actions and with short to one-year interest rates. And so now that it looks likely that interest rates will not decrease, and specifically not decrease before June, when we received that first property tax installment, we're confident we'll receive, we'll continue to receive significant interest income. This has been a little bit of a windfall for the district over the last couple of years. So with that said, we're being very cautious about how we budget those funds. We're trying to use them for one-time expenditures, and that's why we're showing that increase in the Capital Projects Fund, where we can use them for a one-time capital expenditure without possibly creating challenges down the road when interest income does start decreasing. Again, this is the current projection with current funding available. If we do pursue the Safer, Stronger 204 proposal, we'll cover shortly, that would make funds available starting as early as fiscal year 2025 for additional capital investment. So as promised, I just wanted to spend a few minutes sharing some comparable district information. Again, this tends to be an annual rite of passage for us as we look to our, how our districts finances stack up against our comparable districts. Shown here is Indian Prairie 204 spending per pupil compared with seven other comparable districts, as well as the state average. I, I know the board is familiar, but just to reiterate, why we use these seven districts as our comparable districts? These are all unit districts, meaning they have the same programs we have going as early as pre-K, all the way through high school graduation, as well as transition programs. And they're also the highest performing unit districts. So we are comparing against the best districts in the state, the districts that get the most success, the highest test scores, and, and really are the most desirable districts for their families throughout the state. As you can see, we're performing as well, if not better, than these districts while spending significantly less per pupil, as well as spending over $2,000 less than the state average. The most relevant or our, our closest comparable district here is shown is Naperville 203. We spend about $3,300 less per pupil than Naperville 203. We spent a lot of time talking with the board about the challenges with state funding, specifically the evidence-based funding formula. Again, this reiterates with the percentages shown, that equity as well. So Indian Prairie, we have an 84% adequacy percentage. That's the state recognizing that we do not have all the resources necessary to provide an adequate education to all our students. Six of our remaining seven comparable districts have an adequacy percentage above 100%. So one of the most direct ways this impacts our operations and impacts the services we can provide to our community and to our students is with class sizes. 76% of our spending is on salaries and benefits, and so when you have less resources than your comparable districts, you, you're able to staff a little less, and that does directly lead to higher class sizes. So again, we are showing here that we have a class size that is higher than our peer districts and the state average, with a class size of averaging 26. Just to, just to reiterate, 26 is the average. So approximately half our class sizes do come in at above 26. We do have some that are smaller. One of the things I, I will say from administration's perspective, there are some grade levels, more than others, where we are really focused on this class size. We would say that our current challenge is really in the third grade through fifth grade range, that being the area where our class sizes, where we figure, where we feel our class sizes are too high and where lower class sizes can have the biggest impact on student learning. Prior to our ESR funding, we would have said the same thing about K through 2, but we have been able to invest in smaller class sizes at those primary grades. So as we look forward and we look for possible solutions, again, as part of our funding proposal, we are really focused on impacting that, those grades three through five. Just wanted to share our comparable district information. Again, the same eight districts looking at property tax rate. You can see Indian Prairie falls towards the higher end, although we are not the highest of our eight comparable districts. This is the 2022 property tax rate, so this is a year in arrears. We don't quite have all the information for our comparable districts yet. But you'll see operating rates here that range from 4.02 to 5.32. Again, Indian Prairie being a little bit on the higher side at 4.91. Bond and interest, which is shown as the little bit of orange on, on the graph here, again, Indian Prairie, a little, little bit on the higher end at .42, but there is a range of, of 0 to .91. You'll see again Naperville 203 being the district that does not levy anything for bond and interest. They have sufficient resources that they pay for all their capital work through operating funds. And again, that creates a total tax range for Indian Prairie of 5.33, and a range of our eight comparable districts goes from 4.51 to 5.95. And so really, I, I think this, this graph here, which is, was originally requested by board member Rising, I think a, a year or two ago, really, really speaks to the, the challenge here when we look at statewide funding formula that is overly reliant on property taxes. And so that puts, that puts districts that have more property tax wealth at a, at a significant advantage, not just enabled to, to raise money or be able to fund education, but also to provide a lower tax rate to their taxpayers. And so these are those same eight comparable districts shown on a, shown on a dot plot here. That tax rate on the Y-axis is the same rate we just saw, but now we've, the X-axis is our EAV, or our property wealth per pupil. So you can see Indian Prairie of these eight districts has the lowest property tax wealth. And you can see that the remaining seven, there's, there's kind of a combination where not only are they able to fund their education more, they're able to have a higher expense per pupil, but there, in many cases, they're also able to, to generate a lower tax rate for their residents. And you can see there's not a huge correlation. Again, there's a wide variety throughout the state, just how the funding formula, how PTAL has impacted districts over the past three decades, but there is a little bit of a, a trend line where as the EAV gets, gets higher, that, that property tax rate gets lower. And again, those are the same districts that are also able to spend more per pupil. So with that, I just again want to transition and spend a few minutes sharing with the board the work we've done on our Safer, Stronger 204 funding proposal. Right, right before spring break, we shared with our community a message that we would start pursuing this, this funding proposal and providing additional information to our community. So we're currently in that, that community feedback phase. We've had one mailer that has already gone out to our community. We will have a, a second mail that's going out to every resident in the house, every resident in the district, whether you have students in the district or not. That's going to go out in the next week or so. And then we will also have a survey opportunity, again, presented to all residents through a mailer, also available through our website and through social media challenges and channels as well as email. So we are looking to collect as much feedback as possible from over 100,000 district residents on this proposal. We developed the proposal to address our highest priority facility and operating needs. I want to be clear, we're not addressing every need in the district. There are aspects of our master facility plan that it'll take many years for us to address. There are operating needs that we do not believe we'll be able to address as part of this funding proposal. We are addressing our highest priority facility and operating needs with this proposal. We are doing so in a way that will result in no net tax increase. So we know that, you know, again, as a, as a district that is highly dependent on property tax funding, we know that our taxpayers are already paying a significant amount of property taxes, and we do want to respect that. So we have developed a proposal that has no net tax increase. And again, just to reiterate, that means we will still be well below the state averages of our comparable districts for operating spending, even if this proposal is pursued. However, we will be in a better place going forward to, and will be in a better place to address those highest priority needs. So how, how are we planning on doing that? Well, simply, we are looking to continue a 37-cent tax rate going forward to address facility and operating needs. As we've, as we've covered earlier tonight, as well as several other times with this board, our bonds mature in June, on December 30th of 2026. Currently, the district receives about $25.5 million annually to pay those bonds off. That's, that's a 37-cent tax for every $100 of assessed value on district taxpayers. We are looking to continue that 37-cent tax rate after those bonds are paid off, and now that would provide about that same $25.5 million, but we could use that for a new round of district-wide facility improvements, as well as hiring more teachers and mental health professionals to start addressing those class sizes at grades three through five, as well as some high priority needs for additional counselors and mental health services. Just to reiterate and to, and to show the board, providing this, pursuing this would not have any net tax impact regardless of the fair market value of a property if it's pursued. With that said, if there's no reference in their property taxes, is that when that 37-cent tax rate is removed, when the bonds are repaid. That results in, that's about a $93 impact for $100,000 of fair market value. Just in, for perspective, it's about 7% of the total taxes that a, a property taxpayer pays to the district each year. So we have, we've identified several anticipated benefits as a result of this proposal, and primarily, it's improving safety and security of our schools, reducing our class sizes, and adding mental health professionals. These are benefits that all students will see, and they'll see as, as a result of pursuing this funding proposal. But I want to reiterate, we believe that this funding proposal also has benefits for the 70% of our community members who do not have students in our district. And some of those benefits are showed kind of in the, in the, on this document as well. So protecting property values and protecting our district and our community's status is one of the most desirable communities to live in the country. We know that, we know that this is a destination school district, and we know this is a destination community largely because of our schools. So we believe that this proposal will go a long way to continuing, to, to continue that status. We also believe that this proposal will go a long way to enhancing our building efficiency, ultimately saving taxpayer dollars and allowing us to invest, further invest in our schools. It'd also be important to extend the useful lives of our facilities and reduce costly and disruptive repairs. If we had to rebuild our facilities today, the total cost of our facilities is over $3 billion. By pursuing this $25 billion a year proposal, we believe we can extend the useful lives of our buildings by many years and save the need in the future to have to build new or have to make even more significant repairs into our buildings. And then there's an additional benefit I just wanted to cover with the board this evening, and that's the ability to, to impact our stu, our schools earlier than that 2026 date when the bonds are paid. So this proposal is, included in this proposal is, is this concept of, of using a portion of our excess fund balance to repay the current outstanding bonds. This is kind of the, the critical bridge, if you will, between the bond tax rate and then the operating tax rate, and being able to do that in a way that does not result in a double taxation of our taxpayers. So if we do that, you, you, and we presented in February that our fund balance currently is above the 25% requirement in board policy by about $58 million. To repay the 2025 and 2026 bond payments would be just under $40 million. So we do have the fund balance available to repay those bonds, and then, once we receive that new operating rate money, that money can be invested immediately as opposed to being needed to pay off the bonds. This would allow us in summer of 2025 to really look at district-wide safety upgrades and start impacting every school in the district with, with needed safety upgrades. We'd be able to in the summer of 2026 to begin some of the significant comprehensive work we have planned for Wobonzie Valley High School, Niqua Valley High School... we have planned for Wobonzie Valley High School, Niqua Valley High School, as well as Hill Middle School. We would also be able to start the class size reduction in mental health supports in the 25 and 26 school year. Realist, we are looking at hiring about 40 new professionals total as part of that proposal. And realistically, we'd look at scale, scaling those up over a three or four-year period. Again, this would all be possible if the Board of Bates are remaining bond and ser, bond and interest levies and financing those by transferring a portion of our excess operating fund balance. We would need to do that by the Feb, by the February 2025 date. That's set by the county and that ensures that the county does not automatically levy for those bonds. So finally, I just wanted to share some initiatives we've started at the district to work on our master facility plan. Again, putting ourselves in a position to act with, with immediate immediacy and be able to, to really get some things going as soon as possible if a funding proposal is pursued. So this spring, we've done, done some fun work with what we're, with two pilot learning environments. And so I just want to spend a minute or two talking about these. The first is at Peterson Elementary School, and I'd encourage any board member, if you have the chance, to stop by and visit our two pilot fifth grade classrooms at Peterson. So over spring break, we worked with the, our, our architecture team and, and worked with the, the leadership and the fifth grade teacher group at, at Peterson. And we developed two model classrooms that we believe envision, what, 25th century learning should look like. And over spring break, we went in and completely renovated and really reimagined these, these two rooms. That includes new lighting, putting in LED lighting. That includes new flooring, includes new, new paint scheme as well as new furniture, new fixtures, new opportunities to, in how technology is mounted. And we really asked our educators to really explore a variety of different solutions. So we've continually been rotating in different furniture options. We even, even went as far as to, to replace some coat hooks last week. And we're looking for feedback on what the ideal coat hook is in an elementary classroom. So we've really been comprehensive in how we're approaching the, this classroom pilot. And the most exciting, we're rotating four educators through these classrooms over the next two months. And I think, you know, maybe some people may say it's a little bit mean, but we're asking after they spend two weeks in this pilot classroom, to go back to a regular classroom and see maybe what they, they missed or didn't appreciate when they were in the, the pilot classroom and come back with that feedback as well. So we really feel that this, this process has been exciting, but, and then it's really been a lot of fun, to be honest, but we believe it's really going to put us in a good position where if we do propose, pursue a funding proposal, we'll be able to have a concept that's ready to go and really scalable throughout the district as it, as we reimagine these classrooms. We're doing a similar work with our, our team at Georgetown Elementary School as we reimagine their L M C. Similar process, we're going to do that work over the summer. They're going to come back to, to a variety of new furniture, new, again, new lighting, new flooring, new, new technology, new equipment, and just get, get feedback and continue to play with that environment over a semester or two. And again, we want to compete, end up with a, with an L M C concept that then we can scale out as we do improvements district-wide. We've also started to, to pursue and look into energy efficiency and sustainability grants. I think as we talked through the master facility plan in December, we did talk about this being a, a critical funding source as we really look to, to invest in the infrastructure of our building. We do have a, a grant proposal that we worked through with DuPage County, Kane County and the city of Naperville. We're optimistic about that grant and we should hear early, early in the summer whether we were successful in that grant application. But that is a grant that included solar power, E V charging stations and LED lightings for two of our schools. And then the third, third piece that we are looking at, again, highlighting energy efficiency and sustainability, is looking to us, doing a solar viability study for all of our buildings and facilities so that when we are in a position where we have a new roof or we have some significant roof work we're doing, we'll know if adding solar to that project makes sense. Right now, what we're seeing is that for solar to still be viable, to still be cost neutral or a cost benefit, there's, there still needs to be some reliance on grants and, and various programs. And so it's also about aligning which buildings would be the highest priority to pursue some of those, those funding options. So before I close, I'll just talk through our next steps. First, on the budget adoption schedule. We will continue to update the board as necessary, but we do feel pretty comfortable that our, going forward, we do have a balanced budget for the 24, 25 school year. And so we will present a tentative budget at the July 2024 Board of Education meeting with a legal budget hearing and adoption scheduled for an August 2024 Board of Education meeting. Again, we're not looking for any, any action this evening on our safer, stronger 204 proposal, but we will have it as a discussion item at the June 10th Board of Education meeting. And the deadline to pursue funding in the November 2024 election would be in August of 2024. And so with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Mr. Rising.
Yeah, just two quick questions. Slide nine. I just wanted to give my thanks. I, I know in the past we have often told our community how much we spend per student and how much we spend per student compared to our state average and our comparable districts. I appreciate you putting this in a graph formula to give a some potential comparison to our districts. And I also wanted to say thank you for putting the adequate funding levels above that because I, I think that makes a huge difference, especially if we're talking about just 203. For instance, you had mentioned, you know, how we spend $3,500 more per student. There's a reason for that because their adequate funding is 119% of what they need to operate their district versus our local resources and our adequate funding level is at 84%. So, you know, I, I know our community appreciates us being fiscally responsible and spending less per student, but when you compare it to what we have to spend, that's the reason why we spend so much less per student. And it just leads into the other slide that you talked about, why we have higher class sizes, why we need to improve our facilities is because our current funding that we have available to us is considerably low compared to our comparable districts. So not really a question there, just a comment. And then on slide 14. Thank you for saying that this is just a proposal. It's something that administration is looking at. And thank you for saying that the board still has to decide what we're going to approve come August. I appreciate you talking about that. If we were looking at this particular slide, slide 14, to continue that limiting rate would give us that $25.5 million to work on our facilities of 34 buildings, to look at staffing. So this would give us an additional revenue. Just for comparison, and again, I'm going to compare to 203 because their community knows that well. 203 because of their funding levels and how much they have adequate funding. 203 is spending on just two of their buildings. Next year, they are spending, I believe it was $41 million on just two buildings. They have 24 buildings and we have 34 buildings. And just in one year, they're spending $41 million on two buildings. So that kind of gives you an example and a comparison of the funding differences and where we are compared to 203. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Mr. Karubis.
Slide 13. That last phrase really popped out at me. Even if we go with the proposal, or the proposal says, even if we go for referendum, we're still going to be well below the state averages in comparable districts. I think that's an easier way to say what Mr. Rising was trying to say. But the point is made, like, there's, there's no solutions here. There's only trade-offs. If we were to compute the real estate tax rate necessary to bring us to adequate, adequate funding or to reduce our class sizes to 21, do all of the things that are completely 100% that are on the wish list, the local tax rate would be outrageous. And that would not make our community strong and not make it excellent. So I, I think that's an important message to say is that we are proposing to make an increase, but it's still not going to put us into the state averages or comparable districts. And that, that money translates into all these other figures. What we pay third parties, the class sizes, the maintenance of our buildings, mental health professionals. At a simplest level, that can be computed down to a dollar. We want to do these things, we don't have the money. We want to have a balanced budget at the end of the day. You know, we could reduce our class sizes to 21, but we're not going to be fiscally responsible in year two. So there's no solutions, only trade-offs is how I was looking at the situation we're in. Thanks.
I'll, I'll just provide a little bit of context and the math is pretty easy here. So when we talk about $25.5 million annually, that's approximately $1,000 per student. So if you think, when, when we showed our operating expense per pupil being $2,000 below the state average, you can figure we're, we're closing that gap by approximately half. But again, we're not, we're not closing that, that gap. And that is making the assumption that, for example, all of those funds would be used for operations, which is not what our, our proposal is. So the actuality is even going to be less than that. But, but again, we're talking about $1,000 per student on a district that, that right now is spending about $2,000 less than the state average.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley, for another comprehensive presentation. I, I feel like today's presentation specifically summarizes where we were, where we are and we hope to be. And I hope our community listens to this presentation and I know I'll be asking folks to do that. So I have no questions. I, I thought it was, it was very well articulated. So thank you.
Ms. Guns.
I honestly have the exact same sentiment. So thank you. And I, I do want to say that between your presentation and board member Karubis and board member Rising, I think you all painted a picture that, that as board member Jane said, is something that parents at home and community members, obviously, we're talking about 70% of, you know, our community doesn't have students in the district, can, can see, can understand. And I do appreciate the efforts that are being made, you know, if we do get this funding, where it will go. And I will be at Peterson on Thursday, so I will get to see those classrooms.
Ms. Dumbing.
Slide four. Just a quick question for you, Mr. Shipley, on the contractual, contractual services. Can you share what, what, what types of positions or what does, do those fall into? Does that include substitutes or?
Sure. Yeah, great question. So we've, historically, we've used some contractual services for, for some support services positions, things like school psychologists, some social workers, some of those harder to fill support services. So we've continued to do that. But where we've kind of seen an increase in our usage over the last year or two is, is filling positions that traditionally are, are teaching assistant or classified positions. So we are filling some of those through, through, through contractual services arrangements. One, one area also, we've, we've transitioned some of those positions in, from traditional teaching assistance positions into certified nursing positions. And we've used some contractual services as part of that transition as well. But again, as we've kind of committed to, to that as a, a new staffing model going forward, we're hopeful that again, that's, over time, we can transition that back to, to our employees. Our contractual workers are great. They're, they're definitely filling a need, but our preference still continues to be for them to be district 204 employees.
Thank you. And I just, on slide 14, the proposal, I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that this is a proposal where we, there's, there's been no decision and we're still having discussion on this. You are illuminating exactly where we stand and what the potential is if we do decide that this is something that we should pursue. But I just wanted to make sure that, that everyone knows it's still a proposal. And then slide 16, this, this was really important for me as far as indicating the benefits that are, not only will, sorry, families, families that currently have students receive, but for all stakeholders in our community. And the opportunity to ensure that everyone's home values are as high as, as possible, we know plays, that, that our school district plays a strong contributing role there. You know, we've talked so many times regarding our facilities and the dire need that we have because so many of our facilities are, are aging. And so just that life cycle and ensuring that we're able to, as we've talked about, not run into a situation where, okay, we've gone for so long and now it costs even more to, to have those done. And not just repeating what we've, so many things that we've talked about, but, but I wanted to highlight that this particular slide certainly shows the reduction of class sizes, mental health professionals. Obviously, safety and security, security is critical, but showing just the impact of the consideration that we have right now and the impact that can have on the rest of stakeholders, I think, is so critical. So thank you for, for sharing that.
Yeah, and we're, you know, as, as mentioned, we are, it is about 70% of our, our community that does not have students currently in our district. You know, that, that could include families that are, that are in pre-K or, or some of the younger programs that'll be coming into our facility. But we, we recognize that this proposal needs to, needs to make sense for our full community. And so we'll, I, I will reiterate, I don't think I explicitly said it, but we do have at ipsd.org/saferestronger204, we have a resources, including the, the copy of the presentation. Some of these slides are, are included that as well, as well as copies of some of the mailers and information that's already gone out. So I would encourage anybody to, to review that website, to share it, and, and most critically, to share it with people who maybe do not have students in our building, who aren't maybe as in tune with some of the day-to-day communications so that we can get the world word out and again, continue to get good, good feedback on this proposal.
And one thing I really appreciate that is so important that our district has felt is critical, is to ensure that we are speaking not only to those families with students, but also to the stakeholders that don't have students. So thank you, Dr. Tally, for your team in recognizing that and making sure that we're in front of those. Last quick thing is slide nine, where we talked about average class size. Thank you so much to the district for beginning to, now allowing us to, to begin to focus on three through five, regardless of how we, you know, we're, what the direction is. We know that that's so important. But because this is average class sizes and you got, and you've pointed out the fact that we have some that are higher and that are some that are lower, we do have some K through two that, just due to the number of classes that are in the building. We do have some that are larger than, than desirable, although we have been, had a strong impact on the majority of our K through 12 core classes. But it's, it's very difficult. It's very difficult even with a couple of our K through, our K classes that I've seen.
Yeah, I'll, I could say, I could speak to that briefly. It isn't, it, it continues to be an average. There are some, I don't know, sticky numbers or hard numbers sometimes. You know, when there's, when 57 first graders show up, that, that's a really tough number, right? Because that's either two class sizes of 28, 29 that are well above our average or it's three classes under 20, which is below our average. So some of those issues are, are hard to avoid, but lowering the average at least makes that less, less prevalent. And our, our hope would be that, again, that we can make some, some targeted investments at the three through five level to, to again, reduce some of those issues, even if we're not able to completely eliminate them.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Matt, for the presentation. I saw some comments, like online or whatever, that were really focused on the word "net" when you say "no net tax increase." Can you talk about that word?
Sure. And I think this graph is where I'll start. So, we're saying "net" because our intention is to kind of keep Indian Prairie's bar the same total height, but we are looking to replace that orange color with blue color. So, our proposal would eliminate the bond and interest tax rate. It would eliminate it two years early under this proposal, but it would replace it with an operating rate. So, we would be at least in, we'd still be at that 5.2 number in total, but it would be all an operating rate. So, in that, at least in that way, we'd be similar to 203 and that we wouldn't have a bond and interest levy. But it would be, it is a net increase, so it's the bond and interest that goes down. It's the operating rate that goes up, and that is a no-net tax increase.
Yeah, I thought it would be good to address that because I kept seeing it pop up. I hope that everyone gets an opportunity to either check out the website, to look at this material, the full set of material about the proposal, or attend a session. I think we have many, many, I don't know how many set up, but it's a lot with different groups, like school groups and non-school groups.
For example, tomorrow, I'm speaking at a PTA in the morning and then you and I are speaking in the afternoon.
At the Monarch Landing, yeah.
We're at Arlene Welch in the morning.
Yes.
But we have a lot of opportunity for people to hear a live talk from administrators going through the full presentation package. And also, the website is very informative with pieces of information. I am encouraging everyone, this board is looking to vote on this proposal in August. So, we're looking for community input. So, we need our community to fill out the surveys and be informed about what this proposal is about. And the board will carefully study the information and be making a decision in August. So, I have no further questions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last agenda item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any that you attended?
I had an opportunity to attend the Lind meeting while President Donahue was unavailable to be there. And there are no, right now, there are a number of legislative bills before that are being considered and nothing that indicated that they're asking us to take movement or to advocate for right now. There are a number of things that are being looked at, but none that they asked us to take motion on or to help. But stay tuned and they'll come back and let us know where they want us to assist with.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.